We will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Amy.
McEvers?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Here.
Gookin?
Present.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Tonight, we will have the invocation by Pastor Kurt Wondry from the Peace Lutheran Church. Please rise.
Let's unite our hearts in prayer. Almighty God, we give you thanks for this beautiful day, for the favorable weather you've given us, and the abundant blessings that come from your gracious hand. We thank you for this wonderful community in which we live, with the beauty and resources you provide here in Coeur d'Alene. We thank you for these city leaders, and ask your blessing upon Mayor Widmire, all who serve on the city council and the support staff, and pray that you would guide their decisions, discussion, and actions for the good of all people who call Coeur d'Alene home. We entrust these people and this city council meeting into your most capable hands, and pray in the name of our Savior and Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, our community lost a very special person this past weekend with the passing of Tom McTavia, who is well-known for volunteerism and activism for the disabled, and Tom will be truly missed. Tom was not only an advocate for the disabled, he volunteered his time to many causes, including volunteering for the Coeur d'Alene Police Department, where he spent countless hours assisting with a wide variety of responsibilities. He was also extremely dedicated to our city parks and recreational opportunities. Our Parks and Recreation Director Steve Anthony worked closely with Tom on many projects, and Steve said Tom was always a big-picture guy. He had a mission to make sure that all of our citizens had an equal opportunity to enjoy our outdoor recreational opportunities. Most recently, Tom was instrumental in the recent improvements to the trail on Tubbs Hill, which made part of the trail accessible to wheelchairs and easier for people of all ages to explore. Though he was confined to a wheelchair, it didn't slow Tom down. He didn't like the word "handicapped." He referred to his disability as being "minorly inconvenienced." Tom's inspirational attitude that he shared with everybody who knew them, we will miss Tom, and we are thankful for the great things that he did for this community. So, on behalf of myself, and the council, and all of the city of Coeur d'Alene, I offer my heartfelt condolences to Tom's family and friends. They're going to be missed. So, we will move on to amendments. Is there any amendments to the agenda tonight? Okay, no amendments. We will move on to a proclamation, and this is the week of April 20 through the 25th of 2015 is Arbor Day Celebration Week, and I have a proclamation to read, and Katie Kusenky is going to come up, and I will present this to her. I'll read this proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Do they have a million trees in Nebraska?
They do now.
They do now. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, whereas Coeur d'Alene has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree-planning ways. Therefore, I, Steve Widmire, Mayor of Coeur d'Alene, do hereby proclaim this week, April 19 through the 25th, as Celebration of Arbor Day Week. So, I'll present this to Katie.
And also John Schwant, who's on our Urban Forestry Committee.
Okay. Basically, we celebrate Arbor Day in a big way in Coeur d'Alene. All the 4th graders in the whole county get a free seedling, compliments of a variety of the timber industries and tree care industries, and we also have an art contest that we've added to that, and we had 150, more than 150 entries from the various high schools all over the county, and the winner, we made some buttons, so I'll give you these in a second, and I wanted to explain that we've been doing this for 29 years now, and in that period of time, we've given out, well, this week, we're going to give out our 67,000th tree. So, that's not a million, but we're working at it, and we think the kids are going to, some of these kids, I talk to them when they do the art contests and say, "Well, do you remember when you were in 4th grade, you get a tree?" And they, a lot of them say, "Oh, yeah, we did. I gave it to my grandma," or whatever, and anyway, we think that even if 10% of them survive, that's a 7,000 tree increase, and we think a lot more than that are making it. So, we think that's a great way to instill a little interest in the kids in Arbor Day, and they seem to really enjoy it. So, anyway, I'll give you these, and Katie has, I was going to talk about our official Arbor Day program this Saturday.
Yeah, so Coeur d'Alene will be celebrating Arbor Day this Saturday, April 25th, and we're going to start out with a street tree planting at 10 o'clock on Bardwell Drive. Bardwell Drive is in the Landings subdivision, just right up the street from the Landings Park, and we'll have some signage out. We'll plant those 14 new street trees, and then we'll have a get-together at the Landings Park on Long Meadow Drive. There's also more information on our website and information on how to find the park. The ceremony will be at 11:30, and we'll have a free hot dog lunch, and everyone's welcome to attend. We'll hope to see you there.
Thank you very much, Katie. Any questions? No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to a Vision 2030 update. We have Dr. Charles Buck from the University of Idaho.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Great to see you again. Thanks for allowing me to come in today. I'm excited to give you an update for the Coeur d'Alene 2030 Vision Project, which has been powering ahead, and we're making a lot of progress. It's been fantastic experience now for just over two years to be involved in this project, and to be focusing in this current year on really three key areas. One is maintaining that contact with the community and building awareness, increasing the numbers of folks that are involved and participating in the project. The second is to establish for the project itself a sustainability plan, so that we'll be around to help guide and look after this vision that the community has entrusted us with for the years to come. And then the third goal for this year is to really facilitate the implementation of the plan. And as many of you remember from the first time that I came up here, that's where I got excited, that's where the real action is. So, all of these 178 action items are, many are now underway, and we're making good progress. So, just wanted to remind you and anyone watching about the vision and why we have a vision, what is it? This is a shared understanding. We focused on long-term points of agreement among the community. More than 3,000 of our fellow community members have been involved in really providing their visionary ideas for Coeur d'Alene for 2030. That agreement is a critical component in the context of the very broad input that we receive from the community, and now it's our responsibility to take this input, which has been consolidated into an implementation plan, and carry that out. So, the deliverables from our first year are our Vision booklet, and I've got one here, and I'm sure you all have dog-eared copies of these. Recall that the vision process focused all of this community input into these six topic areas, six focus areas, that you can see there on the screen. Each of these, for each of these, we've articulated strategies that will enable us to achieve the vision that has been described by the community. And then the real nitty-gritty comes in the implementation plan booklet that I just referred to a moment ago. So, the implementation plan includes each of these strategies in the various topic areas, and a total of 178 actions that have been articulated by the community and consolidated by our working groups, in particular by the Implementation Planning Committee. So, each of these actions, as you can see there on the bottom, I've got a little bit bigger version of this to come up, includes a description of the action, a tentative timeline for how that will be carried, when that will be carried out. We've confirmed lead partners who have agreed to take the leadership role in carrying out each of these actions, and then also suggest some supporting partners from the community, and you'll see that in just a moment. So, I really wanted to track on what's coming up for the project, and I've articulated that at the very beginning. We're trying to really focus now on continuing to engage the community. We had that intensive data gathering phase for a year, but this project relies on continuous input and on continuous modification and adaptation, so that when we get to 2030, we're really getting where we want to go, and not where we maybe thought we wanted to go in 2013. So, we're continuing to engage the community, trying to get out, let folks like you know what's going on, what we're doing, invite input. We're going around to the service clubs, to church groups, to children, kids' clubs in schools, et cetera, and just ringing the bell for Vision 2030. Obviously, with 178 actions, there's a relatively significant project management role that needs to be undertaken, just to keep all of these things straight, who's doing what, try to avoid redundancy, try to promote synergy. So, we're developing a tracking system to enable that, and our project manager, Nicole Kayler, is really doing a fantastic job taking the lead with that. Thus far, we've been reasonably successful in obtaining grants to help support the project. Most recently, we were awarded a $17,500 grant from the Inland Northwest Community Foundation, specifically to focus on the sustainability of the project. The foundation is devoted to community support and community development, and they're crazy about Coeur d'Alene 2030. They're really excited about what we've been able to do thus far, and anxious to help us continue with this moving forward. And then, of course, a key role is to facilitate the implementation plan, so to do whatever we can to enable that synergy and make that happen. This picture on the bottom right here, I think you may have seen before, and see some easily recognizable characters there. This is the Frontier America's Best Community Celebration that took place in Nashville a few months ago, announcing this community prize from Frontier, Dish Network, and a couple of other corporate sponsors. The grand prize for that proposal, which was submitted just a couple of weeks ago, is $3 million. We're waiting for the initial decision on the first round. They're going to select 50 communities that will proceed in this competition, and we will hear just about a week from today, I think, yeah, next Tuesday, we should hear on the fate of that grant. And we, so I've been chasing grants my whole life as a research scientist. I'm never optimistic, but I'm optimistic about this, and I think we're going to get in. So, stay tuned for that, but it was a great opportunity for our community to go out there and really be highlighted in the context of this national award and competition, and we're looking forward to being up on the winner's stage next week. So, I mentioned this continuing effort to engage the community. We've just recently developed this quick little brochure on the left here that, you know, when we go out and talk to folks now, many of them were not involved with the creation of the plan, but they want to get involved now, and so we realized that we need a process to monitor and track on these volunteers. And so, we've created this slip that we take around with us. We have our board of directors of 20 board members carries around business cards with 2030 contact information, website information. They'll be getting these handouts as well, so that we can track and improve our volunteer base even more. Forty-two lead partners have been identified. I don't think we've got quite all of them on here, but this is really a community effort to engage and attack this implementation plan, to move towards 2030. And of course, the city of Coeur d'Alene is one of the main and key lead partners in many of these actions. We're making progress. I won't try to go through all of the many, many scores of actions that are already underway, but I just wanted to point out a couple of them. I don't know how many of you were able to go to the RGM symposium in the resort in November that really celebrated the Lake Coeur d'Alene Collaborative, and moved the lake implementation plan to the next phase. We were actively, the Vision Project was actively involved in planning and carrying out that symposium. We had a couple of sessions talking about how Vision impacts the lake management plan, et cetera, and it really was a great and collaborative effort with the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, DEQ, many other players. Similarly, we have action underway, for example, the Coeur d'Alene Chamber Leadership Association, which has been, over the years, many of you have participated in that, career development leadership training that the chamber includes. They're now expanding that to include high school-age students to come in and avail themselves of leadership training. The Department of Labor, this Action 2.2, the second one down there, is working on a curriculum, identifying a curriculum to take soft-skill training into the K-12 system to job applicants at the Department of Labor, to develop this ability to better project oneself and to function in the workplace. So, these are just a few of the many actions where we have a lot of progress going on. I could stand up here for a half an hour and talk about more of them, but I did want to leave some time for any of you to ask questions, and also to point anyone to the available information on our website, and please follow us on Facebook, Twitter, social media. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and update you.
Thank you. Questions for Dr. Buck? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Dr. Buck, you get $3 million. What are you spending it on?
So, the project is focused around a center for healthy living. I think you may be aware of a concept that really is the brainchild of Dr. Joe Abadi at Heritage Health, and his concept is to, in the context of a brick-and-mortar facility, to have a one-stop shop for community health. Largely, this is a preventive, preventative health approach, a wellness approach. Don't wait till you get sick. Come in, get your health care all in one spot. The notion is that we would engage trainees from NIC, Lewis Clark State College, U of I, to help staff such a facility, and to bring together not just health and wellness, but fitness, and healthy foods, and nutrition, and dietetics, et cetera. We've also included in the proposal a significant component that would better connect and coordinate the trail system, and add electronic features to the trail system that would provide, for example, fitness information, so if you go this far, in this amount of time, you're going to burn this many calories, and you can track that all on your phone, as well as historical and information about the community, and going along the river, for example. What are we doing to keep the river clean? What are some of the historical issues with the river, et cetera? So, it's really a comprehensive community wellness plan that many of us kind of came together in a meeting that was organized by Frontier here, locally, by Tom Murn at Frontier, to talk about what could be some good ideas that could go forward. And then, the Vision Project team and Hillary Anderson really put together the application.
Sweet. I just wanted to say, most places I go, public meetings, people talk about 2030. So, whatever you're doing is working, and I thank you for that and your efforts, and also just appreciate it, because one of my fears when we first started talking about this was that we were going to do this big plan, and it was going to sit on a shelf. It's obviously not sitting on a shelf, so credit to you and your organization. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your support. It's really been extremely important, and I think you're right. We have some momentum, and the community really is pulling together around this vision, and I think that's just a fantastic tool for us all to use.
Just looking for my business cards.
Any other questions for Dr. Buck? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for passage of the consent calendar, including many things, but most importantly, Resolution 15012, American Legion Agreement for the Use of Orko Field and Ramsey Park, lease renewal with the Museum of North Idaho, and cooperative agreement with Idaho Department of Transportation for ADA improvement.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to announcements. Any member of the city council have an announcement tonight? Kiki?
I have a couple. One is that I wanted to let all of you know that there was to be a presentation by the school district and the library that has been delayed. The librarian, Betty Ammon, lost her mother this last week, and she is away, so that's going to be on the agenda later on. Another thing is, I've had a few discussions, talked with a couple different people, Steve Anthony and Counselor Evans, about the possibility of a Friends of McEwen committee coming together, and there's two people who are really excited about co-chairing that as a committee underneath Panhell Parks Foundation possibly, or some other entity. The reason I bring that up is one of the discussions they had very informally was a possibility of creating an ambassadors-type of program that could maybe help with education on some of the parking issues in McEwen and some things like that. So, that's just some coffee table conversation that's going on. I was at the North Idaho Tourism Summit this last few weeks ago, and that's a regional group, and one of the topics there was Vision 2030, and I want to tell you, it was very well-received, the region's paying attention, and I got to say some good words about the progress there, so there's, and I do have my Vision 2030 business cards in my purse as we speak. Another quick thing, last agenda, we moved a lot of things around, and I had one thing in my notes that I missed, so I did follow up with Steve Anthony and ask if he would get in touch with Cootney Health on that big presentation they gave us on the traffic plan. It just seemed like they said nothing about bicycles or pedestrians in the entire thing. So, I wanted you to know that he did assure me there's a specific person assigned to that, and they're incorporating a lot of new ideas and plans, and they'll bring that forward in the rest of any presentations that they have. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
That's it?
Oh, sorry.
Anyone else have any announcements tonight? I have a couple of committee appointments. I would like to recommend John Bruning to the Arts Commission, and Scott Cranston and Bridget Hill to the Park and Recreation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? General Services, we're looking for, we have Resolution Number 15-013, approving an agreement with Coatings Unlimited for a ward of bid for painting of Prairie Stanpipe. Who would be giving the city report to that? It says Terry Pickle. I don't see Terry Pickle. He's hard to miss, and he is not here tonight.
I can be dangerous talking about this, but I think I can convey the gist.
You want to give a slideshow?
After talking with Terry. So, the Prairie Stanpipe is in need of recoating on the exterior. It's, the paint is getting a bit old. We went out to bid with three different service levels, sort of a good, better, best quality of paint coating, so we, and we got, I think, four bids, if I recall correctly. We're awarding to the lowest bidder on the highest option for the best paint, and it came in within our budget to get this project completed. Once this is approved, we'll essentially have the contractor go to work. We'll get this done this summer, and it should last us for, I believe it was 20 years-ish? It was, with this quality of paint, it should last for a significant period of time. Any mistakes or mine? Not Mr. Pickles.
In the financial plan, and it came in below?
That's correct.
We'll write them out in the financial plan. Any other questions on that?
I move for the approval of Resolution 15-13, approving the agreement with Coatings Unlimited.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, we have Resolution 15014, Approval of Linking Authorization Contract with FIA Card Services, and Troy has the presentation on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We bring before you tonight an opportunity that exists because of a contract that the state of Idaho has gone out and done. We are proposing, with your approval, to bring forward a purchase card program. A purchase card program is basically a credit card program with many additional management administrative functions, so it's more enhanced at the local level than just a credit card. What we are looking at is a cost savings to the city, because we would be able to use this electronic payment method and have great detail and support with it. We believe that we will be able to move our accounts payable faster, and the upside to this particular linking agreement is the fact that the city can piggyback off the state agreement, and that there is a rebate program. The rebate program comes through the transaction fees that exist on credit card transactions. Obviously, if you do millions and millions of dollars in credit card transactions, there will be fees that will be generated. What happens here is the fact that the vendor that we're looking to partner with would exchange a portion of that back to the state, the state would then disperse it to the city, so that we have that protection in place. Bank of America has won this particular award, and that's who we would be partnering with on this particular situation. The cards are done in the individual's name. We have agreements that all staff members that would be a part of this would sign. We still have protection in the event that a card is misused or fraudulently used. If the city of Coeur d'Alene were to spend $6 million on this particular purchase card program, our rebate would be about $84,000. Why now? The reason that we're bringing it to you now is that we've been looking at this for a while. We've been putting together the procedures, we've been putting together a training, and we just converted our software system so that we would be able to bring this forward, be comfortable with it. We would bring it to a couple of departments, test-run it, make sure that we've got it up and running before we would widely disperse it throughout the city. So, I would answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Troy? Woody?
So, Troy, we're going to spend $6 million, one way or the other. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
So, this, we get some money back?
Yes.
And it's safe?
And it's safe.
Nobody can run away with our money?
It's very documentable. It's been done in a number of other areas, and this program incents those of us that have smaller spends, because the state spends a lot more money. We have checked out at least four different cities that have run this program, and they're very pleased with the way in which it works.
Question, Dan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, we pay off our credit card at the end of the month, right?
We do. After you've approved the bills to council, we pay off our credit card.
So, we're not talking about incurring any debt? I mean, is that a danger here that, because the city couldn't incur debt? I mean, they could theoretically on a credit card, but that doesn't work that way, right?
It does not. No, we will not incur any debt. You do not pay any finance charges. Your finance director will not allow that. In so doing, you've approved the budget on the front end, so all these dollars, we're just paying the dollars that you would approve in a different fashion. It's not any additional expenses.
What controls are on the card to limit the amount that can be spent per purchase?
I can do all of that. I can limit the card amount. This card will be limited on where it can be used. We can take the balance up for one day, one week, a half a day, if we wanted to put those administrative controls on it. We would see it for transactions that, right now, if they go to a local vendor, an Ace Hardware, a good example. We get that statement at the end of the month, just like any other credit card statement, because Ace likes to do business with the city, and we like to do business with the city with Ace. Our challenge is sometimes tracking down which department made that particular purchase of that wingnut. And somewhere along the line, we've spent too much money on checking to see which department actually bought that, because we can't read a signature, or the clerk didn't take a good name, and so that compounds itself in such a fashion that with this purchase card, which would have the individual's name which would have the individual's name on it, we would have that transaction. We would know that they bought that. We know what department they work for. We've got that all electronically set up so that when it comes into accounts payable, it will go to the individual in the Parks Department that bought that particular wingnut.
So this replaces what system that's currently... That we're using now?
I would say it's the one whereby we go to Ace, and they send us one statement at the month-end. And we have 15 different departments attempting to figure out where all those expenditures go.
So we're being invoiced, basically? And it makes it very difficult to determine who's buying which wingnut?
And, yes.
Very good.
Probably a poor example. I apologize on that wingnut. But we actually do buy wingnuts.
Wingnut was perfect. We got to chuckle.
Any other questions?
I have two.
Kiki?
Mr. Thompson, have we... Is there any cost-saving studies been done with this program? Like, it seems to me that you just mentioned that that would be a little bit of a labor-intensive thing that was saved.
Yeah, it would be... We haven't studied this, knowing the way in which we do business currently. But everything is moving towards electronic payments. We don't have to send it out via the mail. We don't have to have all that paper. This will come in electronically. So, yes. Councilmember, you're very correct. There will be a savings here that we're not anticipating. So we're running pretty close to full volume for one accounts payable person in the city of Coeur d'Alene. And our experience with other entities is the fact that they do become better with their job duties because of this.
And the other question that just ran across my mind, has there been any conversation with how ICRAMP would interface with this kind of a change if there's some sort of fraud or insurance issue? And has that been a discussion?
We have all the protection under the credit card protection laws that exist on the banking side of this. So it would be very positive in this situation if ICRAMP would take a credit card for our premium payments. Those are the big ones. That would help very much on a rebate program.
Just looking for any additional protection avenues.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Okay, we're looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 15004, which is the linking agreement with FIA Card Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Amy.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move on to Resolution Number 15-015, Agreement with Health Decisions, Inc. to conduct an analysis of eligible participants in the city's health plan. Troy, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The General Services Committee did a good job of asking a number of questions. So let me start with why now? This is not in the financial plan for this current fiscal year. This is an opportunity for us to basically do an audit of all of the eligible and all of the participants on the city's health plan. We have been monitoring this proposal via Cutney Health. They have gone through and done this particular examination. The why now is the fact that it ties in very nicely to our fiscal year to get this done over about the next 90 to 110 days with an outside company. That keeps us away from the renewal period with our current vendor, which would be the first of the fiscal year. It also gets us right through the budget period where we're looking very closely at how we can save any money. Our goal here is to make sure that everyone that's on the city's plan is an eligible participant. We are not suggesting that we do the spousal audit that's in this proposal. We have worked with at least three different organizations that have submitted what they will do. You are looking at the best proposal. In doing this research, we have worked with your medical insurance committee, which has representatives from the Lake City Employees Association, the fire union, the police association, as well as a representative for those that aren't represented at the city of Coeur d'Alene. Our insurance broker is comfortable with this particular entity, and we would like to move forward on this. Again, the dollars have not been appropriated. The break-even point on a cost basis would be of 2.78 dependents on our plan currently are found to be ineligible. That would make up the $9,999. We spend over $4 million a year throughout all of the departments on medical insurance. This is one of our largest cost centers. Our goal here is to do it at this point in time. We will be sustainable going forward because we will do more documentation for all the dependents that are added to the plan. The Human Resources Department will upgrade its fashion of documenting those that come on the plan going forward. So I would entertain any questions you might have on this.
Troy, I know that speculating in a budget is always a dangerous thing to do. But if you were to project forward, would you believe that the 2.78 dependents would probably be found in this audit to cover the cost of the study?
Yes, sir. According to the industry average, for an organization of our size, it should be more than that.
So there's a good chance that of this... The cost of this study, when it's done, it will pay for itself and probably a little more. At this time, it's not in the budget, but there's a very good chance that when we're all said and done, that it will fit within the budget?
Very good chance of that. And it will then be ongoing savings to the city. The other piece to this, which your medical insurance committee does a fabulous job. We meet monthly. We meet with the broker. We go through all of the trends that are occurring, dental insurance, health insurance, long-term disability insurance. Is the fact that when we go to an insurance company and say, "We know that all of our folks are eligible that are on this plan, thus they're all wanting to be as healthy as they possibly can so we can keep our premiums down and keep their copays down," we believe that this will add value at renewal time.
Okay. Other questions for Troy? Woody?
Just a couple. So this doesn't include spouses?
We would suggest to you we don't need to audit that group. We are pretty comfortable that we have good documentation on that.
So this is kids only? And... I'm trying to grasp this. I get the... I love the money side of it. So if this all goes through and you find people that aren't eligible, is a nice way to say it, then they come off the insurance. It saves us on that end. If they find enough, it pays for it. And then, is the process different so that doesn't happen anymore?
Absolutely different. That's where we are going to document the validation that you are a dependent that is eligible for our plan. We probably run into our biggest challenges as our General Services Committee asks these very good questions as well. What would make someone ineligible? In the event of a divorce, a court can decree. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're... That dependent is eligible under the city's plan. Very difficult to find that right now, based on the way we have operated. Going forward, we will look and ask for that documentation so that we know that they're eligible when they're added to the plan.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy? It says that the committee met with the representation from the fire union, Lake City's Employee Association, and Police Association. Did they offer any feedback on this?
They were very positive to a council member.
And does it affect their contracts at all?
Let's... In what way would... They supported this because they know that if we have dependents that aren't eligible and happen to be on this plan and happen to get very sick, that's going to have a major impact on the cost for the insurance for all of us. So they are very comfortable in attempting to keep the cost down, both for the city and for themselves, because it is a very strong benefit. So no, they did not have any contractual problems with the agreements we have.
So the contract basically says that it's the city's healthcare program, and it doesn't really get into the details on who's covered, who's not covered?
It does get into the details.
It does.
The beauty of this is, is that our contract says eligible dependents and defines it.
Very good. Okay.
I... Yes.
Also, another question is, the cost is $9,999. Is there some kind of statutory limitation on that number that it had to be below $10,000?
There is not. This would be one of those negotiations that took place as we attempted to get the best value for the dollar and came at a buck less than $10,000 was their best.
Okey-doke. Thanks.
Any other questions for Troy? Okay, so we're looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Resolution Number 15-015, Agreement with Health Decisions, Inc. to conduct an analysis of eligible participants in the city's health plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on now to Motion Number 15-016, Approval of the Purchase of One Patrol Vehicle. And Troy, you're up again.
Thank you. The Police Department brings to you the second vehicle that we had not anticipated this fiscal year. The staff report represents the 11 marked police cars assigned to the patrol division for patrol officers to utilize. That doesn't include the supervisory vehicles. There's four shifts. We have 35 officers, so there is a need for this additional vehicle. We also have a vehicle that's impounded due to a shooting. And of course, we're not able to use that one. So this is the second vehicle that the department found at Lake City Ford. It's a 2015 Ford Explorer police SUV. It's set up the same way as the last one you approved at, I believe, your last council meeting. We have an opportunity to acquire it at a very reasonable rate, and we need your approval as we go above budget to acquire this and put the equipment into it. We have a really positive partnership on this one, which is why we didn't bring it to you with the last one because we were firming it up with our colleagues at North Idaho College. This fiscal year for them, so prior to July 1, they are going to partner with us and put $25,000 into, quote, "a vehicle." So there will be a vehicle that is used at the North Idaho College campus. It will not be the new one that we're acquiring here. So it's a partnership that they have with us that they're going to make happen this fiscal year for both of us, actually. So again, the $27,000 that we would need to make this transaction happen come from one of two sources. One can be the fact that we have income greater than what we'd forecasted, which we're not quite to an exact point to know how much above budget we'll be at. We'll see how the building season goes and a few other things. We also will probably have some savings throughout other departments. Or we go into our savings, which I would call our general fund, fund balance, to make this cash flow.
Questions for Troy? Woody?
Troy, I know how hard it is for you to dip into our hard money. What... What... Why are you thinking this is a good idea?
Couple reasons. Thank you for that. We work very hard to make sure that your fund balance is solid so that when the rain does come, we have a rainy day fund. This one makes sense for a couple of reasons. The value is here. It's a local purchase. And the fact that we're adding officers. You approved that. We didn't get the grant, but we brought that forward. Now we need to have vehicles to put these folks in. The price is good. As a finance director, I wish the equipment wasn't so expensive. That's hard to change that. We've taken all the added equipment off of other vehicles. We don't have enough to do this car. So I believe you're telling our community and your finance director that public safety is number one. And I agree with that as well. We're taking one-time money to buy a one-time asset. And we had a strong year last year. And we're having a strong year this year. That's the reasons.
Dan?
Troy, is this really fund-balance money? Or is this more of the chief reallocating funds?
We maxed out the chief reallocation of funds on the last vehicle in our creativity. So we are pushing the envelope on this all coming out of the Police Department budget, even with some of the retirements and things. So I want to give... Forewarn you that we may not be able to pull this all off, two new vehicles in the same department.
Thank you.
I guess when we're looking forward, we're going to be going into our budgeting season here over the next few months, I think we have to realize that we have a $70 million operation without any contingency fund whatsoever. We have a lot of moving pieces and moving parts to the city, and there are some times during the year, I think that... Wood, you've been here for a long time, and Ron, you've been here forever. You know that there's a lot of... There's a lot of things that come up during the year that are just unexpected. So, possibly, we should have some discussions in our budget cycle to maybe what we want to do for a contingency fund, because there's been a couple of things that have come up that have been unexpected. But I think the unexpected can be expected because we have so many moving parts and moving pieces. We're always going to get something that isn't in the budget that we need, and I think this is a prime example of it. So, with that, any other questions for Troy? Okay, looking for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of Resolution Number 15-016, Approving the Purchase of One Police Patrol Vehicle.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay. We will move now into a public hearing, and this is Legislative A-1-15, Proposed Annexation from County Industrial to City C-17 by the city of Coeur d'Alene for the Burlington Northern Railroad property. And we are going to run this as a quasi-judicial hearing. And are there any conflicts in the council? No conflicts seen. We will move forward to a staff report by Tammy Stroud.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this evening, we have a request for an annexation of 9.557 acres. This property is former railroad right-of-way lying between the east end of Mill River subdivision. Let's see if I can get you a... Okay. East end of Mill River subdivision and the Riverstone development along the Spokane River. And this is your subject property noted here in the pink. This is the Mill River subdivision. It's bisected by some land that is currently in the city limits, and this land is currently outside the city limits and has not been annexed at this time, and it stretches all the way down to the south side of Riverstone. So, this evening, I'll go through the findings required for the annexation. And the first finding is B-8B, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. And this property is the... Is in the Spokane River District, and it is in the area of transition, and it is noted here in this yellow. The transition area is the green area on the map, and the black is actually the boundary of the Spokane River District here, and the red indicates our existing city limit line. We have some significant policies in your staff report on pages six and seven. And the Spokane River District tomorrow states that generally, the Spokane River District is envisioned to be a mixed-use neighborhood consisting of housing, commercial, retail, and service activities that embrace the aesthetics of the proximity to the Spokane River. And as the mills were removed, they would make way for new development in the river shoreline to be... Shoreline is sure to change dramatically. So, finding B-10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. The subject property does not have any topographical issues at this time. And here's another aerial photo of the subject property lined here in the broken line. That public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. We contacted the Water Department, wastewater, stormwater, traffic, streets, and fire, and they had no issues or concerns with this request at this time. That the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to character, traffic, and neighborhood character or existing land uses. And the subject property is adjacent to Saultease Way, which is designated as a minor arterial. And the surrounding area has a diverse land use pattern ranging from single-family dwellings, including a mobile home park to the west, commercial, manufacturing, and the neighborhood character is a mixture of residential, commercial, manufacturing uses that have been there for a number of years. And this is the land use map showing that this is currently vacant, and just to the west is the Mill River subdivision in the yellow. And this is outside our city limits right now. And then, Riverstone, which has a mixture of some multifamily and commercial uses as well as our park. As far as zoning, the request this evening is from County Industrial to C-17, which is noted in the red. The property here to the north is currently zoned C-17, and then, a good portion of it here in Riverstone, or all of it at this point, is C-17 commercial. So, they're asking for C-17, which is consistent. And the city council must consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And you guys have your findings worksheet in your packet.
Questions for Tammy?
Dan? Mr. Mayor, so, C-17, what was the thinking for annexing it in at C-17?
It's consistent with some of the zoning nearby. It's a C-17 commercial. This is C-17, and the property owner at this time hasn't come forward with what they're asking for.
And that was it? That was the reason why?
I can speak to that a little bit, Councilman Gookin. That's part of it. If you look at the map, you'll notice the dominant color in that area is red, so it is consistent with the zoning in the area. It's also consistent with our comprehensive plan. That area is largely viewed as a mixed-use area. That's largely what we're seeing with the development that's going on along the river. You look at Riverstone, it's largely a mixed-use, mix of residential, commercial. You look at the area... We'll call it the Lance Douglas piece. It's the western third, I guess, of the old mill site. His plan is still coming to fruition, but at this point, it's mostly zoned commercial. Everything that's away from the river is zoned commercial. So, a couple of things might happen with this property. One is, the city's hoping to close on this yet this spring, so it'll be city-owned property. The hope is to develop it for public use and/or to potentially exchange it to get the public closer to the water. So, that's another consideration. We want to... There's value to the city if we zone it in a way that it can be used for mixed-use development, since that's the most likely use in that region. So, that if we've zoned it, say, R1, and we try to do a swap, then the person that we want to swap with has to then go back through the rezoning process to make it C-17. There's a risk to them of that, that they're not sure that they're going to get that done. And so, that lowers the value of any potential trades that we might be able to make. So, and I should note that if there's any proposed exchange or sale of the property, that's a public hearing process. So, in the future, if the council elects to go there, the public will have a chance to come in and speak to any proposed exchanges or declaring the property surplus and selling it off. But the intent now is to develop it hopefully in a way to benefit the public.
And that was my thinking, too, was I was thinking the only reason for C-17, of course, would be to swap it with something. If we wanted to do a chunk along the river and exchange that for another piece of property, that increases the value of our piece and it puts us in a better trading position. But I don't think... I mean, I don't want the public to think that we're going to put something, C-17, in there. I mean, our intent is trails and access to the river and open space.
That's correct.
And we can do that in C-17.
That can be done in any zone. In our hands, it doesn't matter essentially at all. What... The only place it matters is in the event that we exchange it with somebody else.
Very good.
And Warren, C-17 gives the city maximum flexibility.
That's the widest range of allowed uses in our zoning code.
Right. So, with... Without knowing now what any of that may be right now, it's just the wisest thing to give the city the most flexibility and...
It gives us the most flexibility, and it's also frankly consistent with what that region is developing as anyways. It's most likely going to be a mixed-use area, and to get to mixed use, you're going to need to have C-17 zoning, most likely.
Okay. Any other questions for Tammy or Warren? Okay. Now is the time that we open up the public testimony. I do have a list here of people that would like to speak on this. There's no names on this list, but if there's anyone at this time that is not on this list that wishes to speak to this topic, is there anyone? Okay, I don't see anyone, so I will now close the public testimony.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Legislative A-1-15, Proposed Annexation from County Industrial to City C-17 by the city of Coeur d'Alene, Burlington Northern Railroad property, and adopt the findings in order from the Planning and Zoning Commission and direct staff to prepare the findings.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? No further discussion seen. Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we will move now into a public hearing, and this is Legislative A-1-15, Proposed Annexation from County Industrial to City C-17 by the city of Coeur d'Alene for the Burlington Northern Railroad property. And adopt the findings in order from the Planning and Zoning Commission and direct staff to prepare the findings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? No further discussion seen. Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Now is the time for a public comment. If there's anyone wishing to come up and speak on any element of city business, they would have three minutes to do so. Anyone wishing to do that tonight? All right, we have someone.
Oh, good.
Hey, good evening. My name's Tony Epifanio. I am the owner of Shameless Sausages and also the president of the Greater Spokane Food Truck Association, and I just wanted to show up tonight and tell you guys thank you for giving us an opportunity when we came out last Sunday for the rally, and it turned out great, especially with the way the weather was and everything, and I just wanted to show up and tell you guys thank you for giving us an opportunity. So...
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
He knows we're not in control of the weather, right?
Yeah. Anyone else wishing to give public comment tonight? Okay, we're looking for a motion to recess.